Good evening. Welcome to the Yukon City Council, Yukon Municipal Authority Council Meeting. It is December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, approximately seven P. M. We're gathered in council chambers of the Centennial Building at twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, we'll begin our meeting with an invocation given by Mrs. Deborah Kaufman from Chisholm Trail Presbyterian Church, followed by a flag salute. Please rise if you're able. Mr. Horn, would you, would you do us the honor of, of giving the invocation? Father, we thank you for gathering us together as city leaders. We pray that you would focus our time here together, hearing from citizens, allow us to be good listeners, and to do your work here in our city. We ask all this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Here.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Here.
At this time, we'll have our visitors section of the agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time, state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to city of Yukon business. Is Ms. Robinette in the audience? Would you mind just sharing a little bit about your firm and your involvement here in the city? Thank you, Ms. Robinette.
Mayors, city council members, I'm with AT&amp;T. I'm the External Affairs Manager for AT&amp;T. Also have with me our Associate Director for Construction. As you all know, we're underway on a fiber project here in the city of Yukon, and so we're working through neighborhood by neighborhood, our installation of new fiber services here to Tiam. I can talk to you about kind of how that process looks for us. I know years ago, we had visited with Mitchell and his group, which by the way, just to tap for the city, Mitchell Hord is fantastic. He's been very good to work with, and we appreciate the relationship and certainly the communication back and forth. Our process goes a little bit like this. So we come into a city, we visit with the city and let them know here's what to expect. And so when we get out into the neighborhoods, we will post flyers to the doors. We also put signs out in the neighborhoods to let them know that our project is coming. On those flyers is an eight hundred number that is local to folks that can answer their questions and any issues that the customer have with the project. We also give the city our contact information, myself and Rogers. So if we have those customers, if the eight hundred number is not sufficient for, or if there's additional issues that the city feels like those are coming to them that we're happy to address. And at the end of the day, we want to be good corporate citizens and we appreciate the partnership.
Thank you so much, Ms. Robinette. Thank you for being here.
You bet. Thank you for having me.
Any other visitors for our visitors section of the agenda? All right. Seeing no more visitors at this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We will take up the Yukon Municipal Authority Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December third, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the termination of the Sports Park Land Lease Agreement located at approximately U.S. Highway sixty-six slash Main Street and Frisco Road, held by Williams Family Investments LLC, ending June the first, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority reconvene as Yukon City Council. Similarly, we'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December third, two thousand and twenty-four, payment of material claims in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and thirty cents, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal, the extended contract with Brewer Construction LLC until April first, two thousand and twenty-five, for the two thousand and twenty-three concrete and asphalt paving drainage water and sewer project, and a budget amendment, number two thousand and twenty-four dash eleven, for North American Forensic Accounting in the amount of fifty thousand. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to point out to anyone who read the agenda the first day it came out, the minutes of the regular meeting show that I voted for the sport, the new park, the forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollar and ninety-nine cent park. I did not, and so they did correct the minutes, and so I'd like for you to know that those minutes were corrected and I didn't vote for that. Next question I have is on item E, the North American Forensic Accounting. I went back and I never saw the RFP for that. When did we send that out for bid?
It was not, it was not sent out for bid, Madam Councilwoman.
Why?
It was, it was not a public construction project, so it doesn't fall under the same bidding guidelines. It was done similar to how our accounting firms are chosen.
So who decided the North American Forensic Accounting?
We, as the council, reviewed it and approved it in the September, I believe, fourth or fifth meeting, whichever date that was.
We weren't given other, other options. We just had that one in front of us. Also, I want to ask, what's the additional fifty thousand for?
The initial scope for the review included a one-week onsite interview period with a standard amount of document review. The amount of onsite interviews of city employees extended based on the number of team members that needed to be interviewed, and that extended from one week to two and a half weeks. And then the volume of documents that has had to be reviewed was larger than initially estimated. So we've been provided a, an assurance that this will be enough to cover the end of this review, and we expect to have a report before our January meeting.
Okay, and, and I just want to say, I might consider doing that, but seeing how we've already spent a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, then we spent last meeting forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, this additional fifty, that's almost quarter of a million dollars that wasn't budgeted.
Would you like us to break out this item from the consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay. Item number E will be broken out from the consent agenda. It will be taken up in regular order. We have a motion on the table to approve items A through D. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any other discussion on items A through D? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes. We'll now take up item number E from the consent agenda, which has been moved to regular order. We will take up a, a motion to approve a budget amendment, number two thousand and twenty-four dash eleven, for North American Forensic Accounting in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have any discussion?
Again, just to remind you, this is a quarter of a million dollars.
Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
No.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll move item number seventeen forward in the agenda. We will consider approving ordinance number fourteen sixty-six, an ordinance incorporating the State of Oklahoma Commercial Pet Breeders and Animal Shelter Law and Rules into the Yukon Municipal Code by reference, adding new sections fourteen dash forty-two to fourteen dash forty-six to the Yukon Code of Ordinance under Article Two, Dogs and Cats, providing for penalties, deleting or repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion on this item?
We discussed removing the one item about having a permanent home. Did we take that out?
I, I sent proposed language, Madam Councilwoman, and I didn't get any feedback.
I sent it to you and said, and you said, I, oh, I'll look into that. I said, where it said foster a shelter, foster a permanent home, and I said, remember?
I thought you, I thought you had an excellent recommendation, and I sent language, proposed language, but I didn't get any feedback on it. I'll now distribute that proposed language. Take a minute to review it. I'll read it for the public. This is an amendment that would be in Section fourteen dash forty-seven. Time limit for animal shelter stays. No animal shall remain in the custody of a shelter or kennel for longer than a hundred and eighty consecutive days unless the animal is under active medical treatment certified by a licensed veterinarian, the animal is involved in an ongoing legal case or investigation that necessitates extended custody, or the animal has been approved for a foster care arrangement that complies with provisions in Section fourteen dash forty-three. Extensions and exceptions, extensions beyond the hundred and eighty-day limit may be granted upon written approval by the Yukon Code Enforcement Authority based on documented extraordinary circumstances, and exceptions for certain animals, endangered species, or animals with special care requirements may be considered on a case-by-case basis by the shelter management, subject to compliance with state and local laws. Lastly, notification and action. Shelters must notify owners, fosters, or responsible entities thirty days before expiration of the hundred and eighty-day period to arrange for adoption, transfer, or other suitable outcomes. Failure to comply with this section shall result in review and possible penalties as outlined in Section fourteen dash forty-six.
The reasoning for that was because it said permanent home, and I didn't want us to run into what happened the last time, where those dogs stayed ten years, and so that's why I had asked about that.
Madam Councilwoman, would you like to make a motion to add that amendment to this, to this ordinance?
Right. I never received this. I apologize.
It's no sweat.
Didn't see it.
Is it suitable to you as it reads today?
That's much better than a permanent home, because I just didn't want us to run into last time where dogs stayed for years. Yeah.
Okay. With that said, I'd...
Go ahead, Mr.
I amend my motion to include this new language and strike the old language.
I don't think there's any language to be stricken. This is just additive. Okay, so we have on the table a, an amended ordinance that will include fourteen dash forty-seven, includes a time limit for animal shelter stays. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving the emergency clause for ordinance number fourteen sixty-six. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a report from Brent Merchant of Merchant McIntyre Associates LLC regarding grant services. He'll appear to us via Zoom. Welcome, Mr. Merchant.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members, and to the city leadership and staff. I'm joined tonight by Jane Rafelt of Merchant McIntyre Team, who's been assisting me in leading the work for the city of Yukon and DC. Our federal funding objectives and priorities has been outlined by city leadership and staff over the last several months. I want to thank you tonight for the city's investment in us and for your commitment to a process that is difficult, given the competitive nature of federal funding, but one where we're seeing success already, and we have ongoing opportunities we'd like to discuss tonight with council and some additional planned opportunities for two thousand and twenty-five as we look to a potential continuation of a partnership for your consideration. We appreciate the time on the agenda. We also appreciate city council consideration and staff leadership on our current work on the RACE Transportation Grant that we've been working on for some time, and will be moving to application here in the next several weeks. We've been engaged with the city over two separate timeframes in two thousand and twenty-four. That partnership thus far has resulted in two federal funding wins that Jane and I will discuss this evening, and those include, I'll start, those include the Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This was an application submitted to the department earlier this year, awarded this year as well, and is now being moved on by the city, also establishing beyond the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant, the city with planning activities and with additional competitiveness or kind of amplifying competitiveness for the city in future Department of Transportation opportunities on which we're working now, including the RACE Grant. So we appreciate staff work on that, including council, I think awareness and commitment to that process as well earlier in the year. I'll now turn the microphone over to Jane, who will describe our work with congressionally-directed spending.
Thank you, Ren. So this past year, we identified and implemented a funding approach for the Cornwell Intersection Project. This was a high-priority project that we identified early in our partnership with the city. The support from the city administrative team has been amazing, and together we can, we prepared a competitive four point eight-eight million dollar congressionally-directed spending application to add dual left-turn lanes and a dedicated right-turn lane in all four directions of this intersection. The project obviously aims at enhancing safety for both pedestrians and drivers in the area, as well as addressing the increasing traffic. There is also additional funding for ADA pedestrian poles, ramps, sidewalk reconstruction, and striping. Part of this application process required us to engage with your congressional delegation. That includes Senator Mullen and Representative Bice. This effort culminated in the project ultimately being selected as one of Representative Bice's fifteen projects to the House Appropriations Committee. I'm going to stop here because this is an incredible feat, whereas senators are allowed to put forth ultimately as many projects as they see fit, house members are restricted. So being one of the fifteen was an incredible accomplishment. Three million dollars in the FY twenty-five Transportation Housing and Urban Development Appropriations List. I'm also going to stop here because this was nearly double the average award amount in this account. So an incredible situation yet again. While FY twenty-five appropriations are uncertain as of now, we expect them to be passed in March, and we are so optimistic that we are preparing an FY twenty-six application already for the one point eight-eight million dollars to complete this transformative project. I know I just said a lot of words rather quickly, so I'm going to pause here for any questions.
Any questions from council members there?
Sounds wonderful. We appreciate Representative Bice.
Indeed. In addition to Jane leading our work on Capitol Hill with what is known now formally as congressionally-directed spending, but known still in reality of, as earmarks, we are working with the team, and you'll be discussing further tonight, later on the agenda, the Department of Transportation's RACE Grant Program. The RACE Grant is what we consider, many consider to be the flagship discretionary grant program, meaning an application that we can submit, the city can submit directly to the Department of Transportation. While we need the support of the state Department of Transportation, the support of others, it's an application that is not required to go through the state like so many other transportation grants. The team has been incredibly helpful in preparing and helping us collect and organize the technical details required to submit an application that's going to be focused on roadway improvements along Garth Brooks Boulevard, Boulevard from Northwest Tenth Street to Health Center Parkway. We're, we're looking at this grant primarily for the preliminary engineering, design, and planning activities that are incredibly costly, that will enable the addition of a fifth middle lane, improvements at the intersection of Northwest Tenth Street and Cornwell Drive and Check Hall Road, and then the implementation of dual left-turn and dual right-turn lanes in all approaches. We'll also look to have design and plans and cost estimates, estimates associated with traffic, traffic signals being updated in the project area as well. The project budget is still being finalized. As I said, we're going through an application development process with the team, support letters, discussions with council, public engagement that we know leads to successful RACE applications and awards. We'll soon have, I think, a final cost estimate on the planning activities, but we're estimating a budget range between, a budget request of between two and three or three point five million dollars. We'll, we'll have that finalized in the next few weeks. The application is due at the end of January. We'll also be utilizing those great relationships on Capitol Hill to secure important congressional support for the application that will be articulated to the Department of Transportation following submission.
What do we, Brent, what do you think the likelihood is, is of the three million dollars for this Cornwell Intersection being funded?
The likelihood of the three million dollars for Cornwell, while I'm hesitant to ever say anything with Congress was on, is one hundred percent. Your project is in the bill. It will remain in the bill. Congress simply has to pass full-year appropriations, which they will do. They've done every year sincere marks. The question is not if, it's when, as Jane alluded to, and you can see in the news, Congress has to keep the government open. Passed this Friday, government funding runs out in December twenty. They are most likely going to kick the full-year appropriations discussion and negotiation to March. This is what they did this calendar year in the previous cycle. They're going to do that again, and your project will go into law at that time. Moving ahead to submissions in two thousand and twenty-five, we are, for all the reasons Jane stated, on the congressionally-directed spending or earmarked projects, the work we've seen in success already at the Department of Transportation, we're encouraged by the partnership with city staff, city leadership, and we have a set of targets already identified loosely for two thousand and twenty-five based on what we forecast will be made available. Everything I just said about appropriations helps us further define, as those go final, what exact grant funding will be available, but our expectation is that we'll see, as you might note on the memo, we provided opportunities in transportation infrastructure, again, on the public safety front, and then what we call community development around National Endowment for the Arts, Our Town Grants, which we routinely compete in, as well as consideration around brownfields and economic development. We include this list to give you a sense of what we are planning for or considering, and we'll be talking about with city staff as we get through the RACE project in January, but by no means is this list final, and we would fully expect new and different opportunities to be made available, to be made, made known to us. We do our best to, to forecast as far in advance as we can, but there are often new opportunities that come up that we believe merit consideration that could address some of the city's infrastructure needs, economic development needs, workforce, and on down the list. So these grants right now are kind of placeholders, illustrative examples of, of what we will be pursuing in two thousand and twenty-five. I, I will pause and see, given that we have the council here before us, if there are further questions, feedback, suggestions, or specific priorities that any of you would like to articulate, that's always helpful, helpful for us to hear. We think the city leadership and staff does a fantastic job articulating city priorities, but it's always helpful to hear thoughts directly from council if you have any that you'd like to share at this time.
Is there any way we can get a weekly or monthly update from y'all of who you're meeting with, what you're doing, so we can just kind of have an idea of where you are and what process?
Yeah, we, we'd, we'd welcome that. I, I can't see you. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to recognize voices. Mayor, is that, is that you speaking?
This is Vice Mayor Wooten.
Vice Mayor, we'd be happy to provide that. It's something we frequently do monthly, if that would be an acceptable cadence for you.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will tell you, in terms of the cadence and the commitment we're talking about with the staff, we have bi-weekly meetings with the team, and so updates on what we're doing, what they're doing in partnership, that cadence, I think, is, has been really helpful in the way that we communicate that the team is able to hold us accountable to the work that we're doing, the meetings we're having, the applications that we're writing. We'll conduct a monthly review, though, or, or prepare a monthly update for council to share, to, to share with you on a monthly basis.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Would it be possible in that monthly update for you, you to give us some idea of when you'll be meeting with the congressional delegation next?
We will. Yeah, we, we can absolutely do that. I, I will tell you, our staff-level meetings are, are, are pretty frequent, right? Our member meetings are a little less infrequent, that might be, or a little less frequent, rather. That might be...
I think both are meaning, both are meaningful. I think we'd like to be aware of when those are happening.
And, and something I'd share, in addition to that, we've talked about with the team, is enhanced engagement directly in person for you all to consider in DC this year. The competitive nature of grants, the competitive nature of congressionally-directed spending, we're seeing those, those factors increase over the years, and so in-person engagement is something that we recommend consideration of. We know travel budgets and travel schedules are always tight, but it's a factor in our favor when we see leadership from a city we work for, a hospital, a university, show up in DC in person. So...
I've gone, I've gone the last three years with NLC. Last year, I worked with ACOG, and the meeting with all of the representatives and senators on the Hill was much more effective, and that is my plan for this year, is to go with ACOG and meet on the eleventh with them.
On the eleventh of?
March.
Okay.
Rather than the twelfth, when NLC goes. You know, what's good about our community is Stephanie is one of ours, and so we see her at Community Coffee. We have her on speak dial, and so that always helps, just having that personal relationship with her.
Agreed. Fantastic.
I think that'll be helpful, Brent, for us to know when y'all are meeting with them, and we can, we can join as appropriate.
Perfect. I'll do it.
Right. Any other questions for Brent and his team? Anything else you would add there, Brent?
Just in closing, thank you again. We know, based on who we serve, nonprofits, cities and counties nationwide, that every dollar is important, every dollar needs to be considered. So your investment in us is appreciated. We think very strongly about return on investment. We'll continue to do that in the grants that we pursue and the work we put into each of the applications. So thank you for your partnership, and we look forward to consideration of an extended partnership.
Thank you so much, Brent.
Thanks.
Now we'll consider a motion to extend the Merchant McIntyre Associates LLC Service Agreement through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five for grant services as budgeted in Fund Thirty-eight. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving the ARPA subrecipient agreement between Board of County Commissioners of Canadian County, Oklahoma, and the city of Yukon. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes. At this time, we'll conduct a public hearing in consideration of approving the, approving the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity RACE discretionary grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation to make improvements along Garth Brooks Boulevard from Northwest Tenth to Vanneman Avenue, the intersection of Northwest Tenth and Garth Brooks Boulevard, and the improvements at the Tenth Street and Cornwell Drive slash Check Hall Road intersection. I now open the hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
On this grant, is it an eighty-twenty or a hundred percent?
I'm not, I'm not aware of. I think we can probably have a discussion when we, when we take up the approval of the application. At this time, we'll hold the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no comments for the public hearing, I'll now close the hearing. At this time, we'll consider approving the application for the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity RACE discretionary grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation to make improvements along Garth Brooks Boulevard from Northwest Tenth to Vanneman Avenue, the intersection of Northwest Tenth and Garth Brooks Boulevard. The intersection of Northwest Tenth and Garth Brooks Boulevard, and the improvements at the Northwest Tenth and Cornwell Drive slash Check Hall Road intersection. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And, and now Councilwoman Selby, please raise that question.
So let me give the educated answer from staff. I don't know.
So can we circle back on that, Mike?
We, we will have to circle back and, and get you an answer to that. That's actually a question that's not come up. It is eighty-twenty?
Twenty.
Okay, so, get the answer from staff, eighty-twenty it is.
Thank you, Danielle.
Which is kind of standard for.
Oh, thank you, Claudia. Hey, you're hiding behind here. All right, here we go. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooton?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Comore?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty, a resolution for speed zone revision slash limits on. State Highway sixty-six Main Street as proposed by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, ODOT. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion?
Could you go, oh, yeah, could you go over those proposed changes? Is that Mitchell? I watched several of the, um, traffic commission reports and didn't hear anything on those, so.
This, this is actually ODOT. Uh, there's been a big concern about the traffic in the Yukon Parkway and Main Street area. Because of all of the new driveways, new businesses that we've had come along over the years. So we wanted to slow that speed down a little bit. So they're actually going back towards the turnpike on the east side of the turnpike and lowering that speed limit to fifty instead of fifty-five, going westbound. And when it gets to the Life Church area, we're about forty-five miles an hour.
At Life?
Mm-hmm. So, like I said, just with the amount of traffic and the driveways, we felt like we need to slow that traffic down some.
Okay, 'cause I heard something about, in those meetings about Life Church and wanting another entrance and.
Yeah. And really, that's the only speed limit that's changing is the westbound.
Just that, okay.
This is actually talked about in the traffic, uh, meeting a while back when I was actually on the traffic as well, that, uh, since we put in the yellow flashing turn area. At the arrows, is also another we need to reduce that speed.
Yes, we've tried to do some things to make it a little bit safer, but we think that slowing that speed down a little bit will help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the final plat for CPI Pipe and Steel located at sixteen five four four West Highway sixty-six. Yukon, Oklahoma is recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Comore?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving the preliminary plat for Integris Rural Health, Inc., located at twelve oh one Health Center Parkway, Yukon, Oklahoma. As recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the bid specifications and authorizing team design to advertise for bids for an on-call water and sewer project. As recommended by the city engineer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Mr. Zimmerman, would, would you, uh, consider amending your motion, um. To instruct the city engineer to look at the bid quantities in this particular bid spec? Um, the quantities, as discussed, as I discussed with the city engineer earlier this week, are not reflective of. Of the actual quantities that we are likely to incur. They are representative quantities, but not, not our best estimates. Of the quantities of services that the city would buy in a given year.
I would make my motion to accept those amendments.
Okay. Perhaps we could also have the city engineer send those back to, to the council before, like, so that we're aware of it before the bids go out. Because I think we have a little bit of time between this meeting and the next meeting. We wouldn't want to delay the bidding, but I, I do want to be aware. That there's a study that's been performed of the likely quantities that we will encounter for water and sewer based on hit, you know. Historical precedents, not necessarily the greatest indicator of the future, but it's probably better than just a stab in the dark.
Right.
All right, so, uh, Councilman Zimmerman has agreed to amend his motion to instruct the city engineer to. Study the likely quantities and update those quantities in this bid before sending it out. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Comore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the bid specifications and authorizing team design to advertise for bids for an on-call concrete and asphalt paving. And storm, storm sewer project as recommended by the city engineer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Similarly, would you mind amending, uh, your motion?
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Wooton, uh, similar, similar, similar issue with quantities to instruct the engineer to. Uh, study the quantities from, from the past year or two and, and update those quantities accordingly before sending out the, uh. Uh, before sending out for bid.
Absolutely.
All right, the motion's been amended. Do I hear a second to the amended motion?
I'll second the amended motion.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Comore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider accepting a grant from the Oklahoma Emergency Management for the GIS Data Remediation Grant as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving a special use permit from Kelly Heights LLC, JG, and Paula Kelly for a single RV located at three oh four Garth Brooks Boulevard. As recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving Phase Three of the Citywide Street Panel Replacement Program and the Budget Amendment twenty twenty-four dash twelve. In an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars to be paid from the twenty twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving with Drainage. Water and Sewer Contract with Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So this three hundred thousand wasn't budgeted, it's a budget amendment we're adding to the budget?
That's correct.
Another three hundred thousand. Wow. And what, where's that money coming from?
The offset to this, I believe, is also interesting.
Again, counting our chickens before they hatch. We haven't gotten that money yet.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
No.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Comore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action regarding renewal of the current agreement with Placer Labs, Inc. That expires March eighth, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
A motion that we, uh, do not renew this contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to discuss this. This is how Mustang continues to get businesses like Chick-fil-A and some of the other businesses by showing. That people from their community travel to our community. Again, we're not trying to find out where you go at night, Jeff. We're just trying to see where people are going so that we can show businesses, hey, if you build here, they will come. And that is how Mustang is continuing to grow their economic development. Um, it's not a Big Brother thing, I know that's what you feel. Um, but just like what we did with Main Street the other day, we were able to show how many people came to these events to justify. The economic impact that it has on our community.
It's never a Big Brother thing, but it's always a Big Brother thing. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just not a fan of, of tracking services.
Then we're gonna get behind, we will not.
Well, thank goodness, we already have a Chick-fil-A, so we beat Mustang on that one.
We're gonna get behind.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
The vote is to not renew the, the agreement with Placer Labs Incorporated.
That's correct.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action to approve the services agreement between Lighthouse Services LLC and the City of Yukon. To provide the City of Yukon with an ethics hotline. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Yes, I'd like to discuss this. Um, you know, we have had this in the past here in Yukon, and what it became was this person was mad at this person. So they turned them in. This person gets mad at this person. As long as it's anonymous, I can say whatever I want. In fact, I can say anything about you guys. And turn it in, and that person has to investigate. And I've told you before, if it's an anonymous tip, I'm not listening to it. I want to know something that's valid. This is gonna become, it reminds me of McCarthyism. I know y'all are way too young. Um, to even remember that error, but of a police state that we're turning, we're, the morale that this is gonna give for our employees. Is horrible, plus it's costing us money. Um, and who is gonna, who is going to check out all these. Ethic tips that are happening? What, who's gonna do that? Us? HR?
I, I would like the record to show that I've got a degree in history and teach McCarthyism, so I did get that reference.
But you are too young.
I, I read through this.
I'm pretty old.
I, I read through this, and one thing I liked was the employee could leave their information. And the company will be the only people that information, they cannot give it to city management, council. It has to stay with that company so that they can get back in touch and, and get more information as needed.
But who's gonna vet these, uh, complaints?
So the, the company has, Lighthouse Services, uh, Miratech has the ability to assign different investigators. So the complaints can, you know, complaint or, or concern, hotline issue, ethics concern, come in. It can come in anonymous, or people can leave their information. Even if it comes in anonymous, they can also take a code. That they can check back in, so they're, they're still anonymous, but they can check back in on the status of the case. And then, depending on the type of complaint, if a complaint comes in on me, then I'm not the appropriate person to receive that. Similarly, if the city manager receives a complaint on him, he's not the appropriate person. So what this allows is if there's a conflict of interest. Or a conflict, it shields, so I can never see a complaint that somebody makes on me, city manager can never see it on him. But then, we have to assign an investigator, and these all get logged. There's no ability to ignore them or to. Um, not investigate them. They all get logged, and when they get logged, they get tracked and reported on. And so sometimes you investigate something, and hey, it was, it was a non-issue. Or we, we looked into it, and the person had their facts wrong, we dug into it enough. But if you get three complaints like that. There might be something there.
But who's gonna investigate?
We need to assign appropriate investigators, that's part of the implementation process. At the moment, we're trying to decide on a service provider that has the infrastructure. That will allow for people to call in or go to a website to submit a concern.
My, my concern with that, just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is that if it's an employee, we have no business even looking at that complaint. Because we're not over personnel with our charter. It would have to go to someone like HR. That's a huge burden on that person.
I, I think, and there's some conflicts involved. HR had it historically, and there's some challenges with placing it with HR, because they also have some concerns. We need to look at the city charter and look at the enumerated powers of the council. The council is focused on. Identifying any complaints and concerns within the city that deal with policy violations, deal with procedural concerns. Deal with ethical violations. We, as a governing body, should be able to hear those. And then, obviously, we don't need to direct the employees ourselves, we can work with the city manager, the city attorney, and other city staff. To properly make changes that make sure that these concerns are heard.
I disagree. I feel that that council, it states very clearly that we are not to have our hand in the personnel. That's why we hired a city manager.
Any other discussion on this item?
Mayor, as I understand this, this is solely focused on staff complaints and internal complaints, so the only ones that. Theoretically will be complaining will be staff members.
This number should be publicized. I mean, it should, I think that the people that know the most about the city are, are the team members. The two hundred and fifty-plus team members that we have working within the city. But if, if someone sees an ethical violation. That's a member of the public, they should be able to report this.
I, I, I will tell you very briefly that my experience, and I have been in cities where they've instituted hotlines of this nature. Uh, and one city in particular, I spent as much as ten hours a week. As the city manager, when this program first started out, I was spending up to and beyond at points, ten hours a week. Investigating complaints. It, it really cut into my time, and I didn't feel like burdening staff with this. I mean, there could have been a way to do that, I could have rotated it amongst department heads, we could have come up with a formula for it. But given the nature and the seriousness of it, I felt that was an obligation that I needed to, to take on myself. These were, in many cases, in some cases, career-ending kinds of complaints. I would estimate upwards of seventy to eighty percent of the complaints. Form a nature that never rose to the initial level and never should have been. In the, uh, in the realm of a hotline to begin with. So there's some education that we'll do, and I've looked through the materials. I'm confident that we can work through the education materials. My fear again is when you, when you open it up. And make it wide open, um, there will be scores of unintended consequences that we can't even think about from the dais this evening.
I'm part of a mayor's, uh, group me, and I, um. Put that out and just said, what are your thoughts on an ethics hotline? And every single person on my group me said, absolutely not. That's a hotbed. If, if something's going wrong, your department heads know.
I think it's really critical that the public, as well as every employee, know that they have a voice, that they have a channel. That's independent from their immediate manager. It's independent, that they cannot be bullied. They cannot be intimidated, they can't be scared into submission, that if they have a concern. That they see something going wrong, they need to know that they can report it up. They need to have a voice. Because otherwise, I think there are some things historically that have occurred in the city. And some things that may even currently be going on that we want to know about. We want to make it right. We want to ensure that people have a safe place to work, people have, that people are not subjected to abuse, harassment, et cetera. Like, that, that really concerns me, and it's, and this is a channel that world-class companies use. There's no reason that a municipality of two hundred and fifty employees can't use a similar channel. And there, it is, the secret sauce is in the implementation. We have to think, we have to be thoughtful about the implementation, what kind, we don't want somebody complaining about their water bill in this item. That's not, that, that's not the right forum, they can do that a different way. But we, I, we need a channel for people to report. That's independent of their immediate supervisor and, and their chain of command. There has to be a way. I would hope that everybody's immediate supervisor is the most understanding person in the world, but we've all worked at places where that's not the case.
I too want people to work in a place where they can go to work and not have to fear that if they make somebody mad in the public or at their job. That they're gonna be turned in. Did you have a?
I, I would ask for the opportunity from council to really, we, we had staffed this. And, um, really had gone through as a staff before the agenda item. Uh, the idea of an internal process. And, and had done a great deal of thought and a great deal of work had been put into that in terms of the implementation and what the process would look like, so. There was a, a fair amount of effort that had gone into this, and, and we took our charts seriously. I mean, everything you've said, Mayor, resonates with staff. And we want to be, or have that opportunity. What I worry about is, is taking an action tonight and passing this as an item. And, and having a process handed to us that we've not had a great deal of input into. And, um, you know, I, I, I would say this much, uh, from where I sit this evening. There, there's a new sheriff in town. I, I carry none of the, none of the burden and none of the baggage of previous managers. And, and I've run ethical organizations. I told you when I interviewed that I swore an oath on July one, nineteen eighty-one. That I would not lie, cheat, or steal, nor tolerate those who do. That's the honor code at West Point. I still follow that today. That, that was forty-plus years ago that I took that oath as an eighteen-year-old. And, and so I run. I would ask for the opportunity from council to really, we had staffed this and really had gone through as a staff before the agenda item, the idea of an internal process, and had done a great deal of thought and a great deal of work had been put into that in terms of the implementation and what the process would look like. So there was a fair amount of effort that had gone into this, and we took our charts seriously. I mean, everything you've said, Mayor, resonates with staff, and we want to be or have that opportunity. What I worry about is taking an action tonight and passing this as an item and having a process handed to us that we've not had a great deal of input into. And, you know, I would say this much from where I sit this evening. There's a new sheriff in town. I carry none of the burden and none of the baggage of previous managers, and I've run ethical organizations. I told you when I interviewed that I swore an oath on July one, nineteen eighty-one, that I would not lie, cheat, or steal, nor tolerate those who do. That's the honor code at West Point. I still follow that today. That was forty-plus years ago that I took that oath as an eighteen-year-old. And so I run an ethical shop. I run an ethical organization. And if I find in that organization something that is not ethical, if I find in that organization problems or issues, I will deal with those. You pay me to do that.
I have no doubt you will.
So again, I urge due caution with this. I've seen this implemented poorly, and it does more to destroy and actually reverse the intended consequences. And I believe there can and would be unintended consequences of an ill-conceived effort. I'm not saying that we don't need an effort. I'm not saying that we shouldn't think about it. We were going down that path, and I heard some very good ideas from staff. And I think with proper direction from council, we can do that. Again, it's not my vote, but I'm the person you're charged with implementing this. Pump the brakes. Let's think about this. Hand it back to staff. Let us look at how we can integrate this with a full-on staff effort and think very carefully before we open it up to the public at large and retain, retain the council manager form of government. Those are my comments on the matter.
We have someone here ask the cost. Was it eight thousand a year?
No.
What was the cost?
There's an implementation fee of five hundred dollars and an annual fee of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Oh, it was thirty-five. So it was three thousand, sorry.
Three thousand total. And we changed, the contract is changed to a one-year agreement, and the other change from the council packet is that it now has Oklahoma governing law in the contract. I think this is a tool. You know, this is a tool in our city manager form of government. This is a tool that the city manager, staff, as well as the council can use effectively to manage reports. And it's a tool. It's about how you implement it. It has lots and lots of features. You can tailor it down. You can restrict the types of codes that people can report on. You can have a digital suggestion box that moves things from, that aren't ethical breakdowns into just, hey, I have a good idea. That's fine. That's not, that's not, that doesn't require an investigation. It's just a good idea. But I think that these types of tools will shine a light some areas, and it doesn't have to be time-consuming. Each report needs to be investigated by an appropriate person, and you can easily assign an appropriate person. And once that person's assigned, you can move towards closure and documentation that gives traceability. And then at the end of the year, the city council could inquire, hey, city manager, can you give us a summary of all the concerns that were raised over the course of the year? What was the disposition of those? And if it's a waste of time, it's a waste of time. But if we get some real concerns and learn some things about our city, it's worth it.
How long is the agreement for with this company?
One year.
I think we had somebody who had a question.
Yes, sir. Please approach the podium. Give us your name and address.
James Powell, nine five eight Dover Mansion, Yukon. Just had a quick question on that. Is this a fee for services if you're, are you going to have to pay for each ethics hotline call?
No.
Or is it, you have to hire a special investigator?
No.
Or is there going to be expenditure, need to expenditure for an investigator?
No.
Okay.
Who has the motion? Mr. Clerk, who has the motion and the second on this?
Mr. Zimmerman has the motion and Mr. Wooten seconded.
Would you mind making a motion to?
You want to table?
To table it and possibly let Mike Castro come up, him and his team come up with some ideas on how they plan to.
The more appropriate motion, if you don't have a date to bring it back on, is just to postpone indefinitely and not table.
But if we table it, we'd come back the third.
Supposed, oh, well.
Fourteenth.
No, it's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Would that give you enough time?
He did say there's a new sheriff.
I believe it would.
I'd make a motion to table this for the next meeting.
So the prior motion that you had, you've removed that one, Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Do we need to, we had that motion and we had it seconded. Also, do we need to call a vote on that for it to fail? Roger?
No.
He can withdraw, he can withdraw the motion.
You can withdraw, withdraw your first motion.
Well, I withdrew, I withdrew it and made the secondary motion to table to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second thought?
Second.
The motion on the table is to postpone until January the fourteenth.
Second that.
Any other discussion on that item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a discussion and consideration, possible action to approve ordinance number fourteen sixty-seven, an ordinance of the city council of Yukon, Oklahoma, amending chapter two fifteen Unified Development Code of the Yukon Municipal Code by amending article four Building Envelope Standards, section four one one Urban Core Overlay District, making certain additions, insertions, and deletions, repealing ordinances in conflict, excuse me, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Mayor, which item did you just read?
Number eighteen. Did I skip one?
No, you're good. I'll call the roll. Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item eighteen A, we will, at this time, we'll consider approving emergency clause for ordinance number fourteen sixty-seven. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving ordinance number fourteen sixty-eight, an ordinance amending section two fifteen of the Unified Development Code, article five, section five oh six F Residential Light Trespass, subsection five A, applicability and enforcement to provide for a phase-in for existing residential lights, deleting or repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Item number nineteen A, at this time, we'll consider approving emergency clause for ordinance number fourteen sixty-eight. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider removing from the table a motion to approve a private utility easement for sewer line to serve pets and people humane society located at seven oh one in La Ave, unit B, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I hear a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Again, this is to remove the motion from the table. Any other discussion on this removal from the table so that we can consider this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Now we have a motion to approve a private utility easement for a sewer line to serve pets and people humane society located at seven oh one in La Ave, unit B, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
No.
At this time, we'll consider removing from the table a motion to approve a private utility easement for a water line to serve pets and people humane society located at seven oh one in La Ave, unit B, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? This is to remove the item from the table. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we will consider a motion to approve a private utility easement for a water line to serve pets and people humane society located at seven oh one in La Ave, unit B, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Seeing no second, the motion fails. Any other motions on this item? Not at the moment, ma'am. We're waiting to hear for an item on this, on this particular, we're waiting for a motion before we have a discussion.
I thought we had that. Oh.
We didn't have a second.
Just second it so she can at least.
I think I was at the wrong place. I was reading on, before you said, I know exactly what we were talking about. I apologize.
We're on number twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Please approach, Ms. McRae, please approach the podium. McCree, I'm sorry. Very good. Please.
First, I want to clarify something on our last meeting. We have sixteen dogs in our shelter and thirteen cats. We don't plan on going over eighteen to twenty animals.
Very good.
So I want to clarify that. I do agree with the hundred and eighty days because I plan on being the president for a while, and I'm implementing new things, and we are not going to get back in the old situation we had. So I'm understanding from you that our, the problem that it was tabled is because of sewage. You wanted an eight-inch pipe for the sewage?
That item was number twenty, ma'am, and that item has passed affirmatively.
Oh, okay.
So we're looking at item number twenty-one. The item has been motioned by Councilwoman Selby. It was seconded by Councilman Shriver. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Wooten, sorry. So that's the item we're on, on the water line.
Okay, so do we have a problem with the water line?
At the moment, with, we have a motion and a second currently.
So now we're going to vote on it. A while ago, we weren't.
Okay. I'm going to stay here till you vote.
You're going to stay there until we vote? Okay. Very good. You know, I think one of the challenges with this particular water line being a private utility easement is that it runs underneath the property of the city, and if it granted, it will restrict the future possibility of building for the city. It restricts our ability to build on that section of the land. The sewer line is on the backside of the property, so it really doesn't impact our ability to utilize our property. But the, but the water line runs and bisects the property right essentially underneath the current parking lot.
Ask a question on this. If this is voted down, is there a way for them to still get water?
Yes, they would just have to access it through normal rights-of-way and normal easements.
Okay.
Or being in agricultural area, they could drill a well or something.
Okay.
Bet you how difficult would that be? And my thing is, this is their land. They should be able to build what they want to build on it.
We fully, we fully agree with that.
You also have to understand that our building is a fraction of the size of the animal control building.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
No, what's the question?
Councilwoman Selby, you had a question for her?
Right. They're not wanting to let them use the water line, the easement, because they said it would hinder us being able to build in the future. I think Mr. Wooten, I'm not sure who asked. Somebody asked, what would it be to do your own water and said you'd have to get it through a normal water source? I mean, what is that entitled?
I'm not sure. We haven't done any analysis down there on any of our property to see about a well and depth of well and.
So they'd have to go through.
That would be Water Resources Board on drilling water wells.
Do we normally grant people access on a private utility easement?
If they're, if they are, usually it's a quarter or a mile away from a public water main that they can drill a water well.
They would still have access to do a line to the main.
At that location, the closest point is where they're wanting to connect to, to go somewhere else and get water, they'd have to go back up to Inla and go east to basically Swartz concrete there, or go north, or south underneath the railroad tracks there to get on the other side of the railroad tracks.
How much is this going to hinder us from future build? And is there any land for us to future build there?
The water line, I think if I remember right, is it a twenty-foot utility easement? Yeah, it's a twenty-foot utility easement. So basically, it's going to restrict twenty feet of that property pretty close to where the parking lot is and the curb line of the north line of that curb there, if that's what you're asking.
So we're not going to build on that because that's our parking lot?
Well, part of that falls on that property too as well, where the old animal shelter was at.
Right.
If that's what you're asking me.
So would it cause undue stress on us to allow them to have a private utility easement?
Not for sure. The main reason is I don't know what the future use of that property will be, if you're asking me.
Okay, thank you.
But for any future use, it would hinder.
Yes, depending on what you're wanting to do with the property, yes. If it stays what it is, no. But who knows what tomorrow brings, if that's what you're asking. Maybe, you know, the manager may be a good person to talk to about the thoughts of that.
You know, a concern I would have, just to interject, and I have seen this before. I've seen levels of government above municipalities, state and our federal, mostly state governments, take an active interest in animal shelters and really mandate the types of structures, the facilities that get used. And we can't anticipate what the state will or won't do, but that is a wild card that could come out of left field real quick. And, you know, to the extent that we can maintain our flexibility, to the extent that we, we work, you know, if we're going to approve this, that we work to minimize, really maximize the city's flexibility on its own property for the future. I think that's a direction that we want to take. You know, I can't sit here today and tell you what our shelter will look like ten years from now, but what I can tell you is I've seen multiple times over the last several years in my previous experiences where states have become actively involved in animal control shelters and how cities manage those shelters and the facilities cities are mandated to have at those shelters, and they've taken a keen interest in that. So rarely do state and federal governments reduce their footprint and their stranglehold on cities. I wouldn't look for that to lessen in the coming years. I would look for that to increase that level of control. Just food for thought.
I do know that you allow us to use the dog park that's on your property.
Correct. So is the concern this size of the PVC pipe for the water?
No.
My main concern is if we could use this property later down the road after we put it in there.
If we, if we grant a private utility easement, just as a matter of practice, it permanently restricts our ability, ability to build on top of that land.
Okay, even though you do understand that we already have water on the property?
I understand. What I'm saying is, if we grant a private utility easement, and this path that we're considering in this, in this particular motion, it will permanently restrict our ability to build on the surface of that land. Does that make sense?
It does.
So it gives, it, it's not, it's not like if I could give you a pipe that connects to water and never restrict my ability to build, I'd do that all day long. No big deal. In fact, it's easier than the sewer, right? Because it's likely not going to get clogged. But, but it further restricts our ability, long-term, to build on this piece of land. And this piece of land is important to us because we've kind of put a stake in the ground where our animal control is going to be. We're already restricting our acceptance of animals to our city limits. In fact, our head of animal control today had a discussion with not a, not a non-resident of this area. He lives in the seven three oh nine nine, but he doesn't live in Yukon City Limits, who was trying to surrender an animal that he found, but he found it, and there was evidence of it that he found this animal in Oklahoma City Limits. So he would, it was more convenient for him because our animal shelter is closer. But we don't accept animals from within, from outside of our city limits. If we did, we would need an animal shelter that's three times the size. What the city manager has just described is that if and when, let's say, there's a federal mandate, a state mandate that says you must accept any animal that's ever surrendered, well, get ready because we'll have to build a facility based on, this is based on our animal, our director of animal control, Curtis Lemmings, he would say we'd have to build a facility three times the size of what we currently have. That would be a heavy burden. So we need the land, we need unrestricted land, and we, as a council, I would recommend that the council never further restrict future councils, when that's a matter of best practice. I try not to restrict my successors because they, I don't know what they're, what challenges they're going to face. I'm sure they're going to be significant, insignificant challenges like we currently face.
Okay, a question I have is, I understand the revision of the hundred and eighty-day rule that we can only hold animals for up to a hundred and eighty days. Does that go for the Yukon City Animal Shelter as well?
The, you're asking, does the? Um, the, you're asking, does the ordinance that we passed earlier in this meeting apply to the Yukon Animal Shelter?
Yes.
Let, I could circle back with you and shoot you an email on the exact language. The language was in the um, in the council packet. But I can, I can also email you that, uh, the amendment we made on the hundred and eighty days. I'll email that to you as well.
Okay, so that has it in there where it states that Yukon Animal Shelter can only hold an animal for a hundred and eighty days?
I think generally, aside from judi- aside from holds that relate to judicial holds, like if an animal's involved in a court case, I don't think it's the practice of the Yukon Animal Control to hold an animal even close to a hundred and eighty days. The only exception to that would be regarding um regarding judicial holds where a court has said this animal must be kept in custody until this court matter is resolved.
But the land we're talking about is currently a par- our parking lot.
That's correct. Any other discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council. My name's Kevin Bishop. I've been the engineer near of record for this proposed development. And I would just want to let you guys know that the proposed easement for the water line.
Mister Bishop, could you please provide us with your street address?
My home street?
Yes, sir.
I live at three three six oh one Clear Pond Road, Shawnee, Oklahoma.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the current easement that we're talking about is centered in the driving lane of the uh current parking lot. Have you familiar with that area?
Mm-hmm, I am, yes.
Okay, so I don't foresee that in the future that this is really gonna be a developmental issue because there's always gonna be a driving lane in that area. That's my professional opinion. And if there is a case where the city does need the land, then I think potentially the easement could be vacated. And we could relocate that, that uh water line that's in the easement. So that could be a future course, if future development shows that this easement location is needed for instance, a building put on top of it or whatever. But again, I think Pets and People is providing a a good service to the city. They're serving as an overflow for current animal shelter. And of course, they can't operate without water. So uh, I would uh suggest that you go ahead and approve the easement because I think it's the best for the city at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item?
Is there any way to find out how, how far out the main is to be able to hook into?
It's along Inla Avenue, closer to Schwartz Ready Mix.
It's pretty ways.
Yeah, it's a few hundred yards down the road.
Can we read the motion again? What are, what is it?
I'll read, I'll read the motion. Uh, currently, we have a motion to approve a private utility.
To approve, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
We have a motion to approve a private utility easement for a water line to serve pets and people, Humane Society, located seven oh one Inla Avenue, Unit B, Yukon, Oklahoma. Motion has been made by Councilwoman Selby and seconded by Vice Mayor Wooton. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Wooton?
No.
Shriver?
No.
Zimmerman?
No.
Kilmore?
No. At this time, we'll have a discussion and possible action for permanent street closure at Linda Lane and Dover Mansion to be completed by Brewer Construction, Oklahoma LLC in the amount of six thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and ten cents. Using a twenty twenty-three Yukon concrete af- asphalt pa- excuse me, with drainage, water, and sewer contract. And the purchase of three type three barricades, double sided and signage, in the amount of one thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars for a total project cost of eight thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and ten cents. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second? I'll second this item. Any discussion?
Yeah, let's.
Where is this? I can't find where Linda Lane and Dover.
Well, there's actually three street names.
And I went back. Well, and I went back through all of the traffic commissions and couldn't find anywhere where this was. Why are we asking for this stuff?
On Google Maps, so the, I mean, th- this development occurred over time, right? And there's a lot of new homes in the middle of this neighborhood. Mister Short can attest to to how it developed over time and.
You're wanting to block the street off. He's not doing anything. We're gonna be right back here again.
Wait, would you mind, uh Mister Short, I appreciate your perspective.
Okay, because so this is dealing with your issue.
Yeah, for three years now.
Because when I looked through the traffic commission, it never said Linda Lane. Yeah, so that's why I was confused.
There's three, there's three roads there. It's Dover, Linda, what's the third one?
River Mesa.
River Mesa.
Okay, because I saw you speaking, but I couldn't find this.
So you're down more on the Dover side of things.
The original Dover.
Okay.
They've changed that street name to Dover. I don't know why. I don't know who changed it, but it used to be River Mesa.
Okay, so.
But they didn't open, what year did they open our street?
Two thousand seventeen maybe.
Okay.
And there were only three streets, and that's when we started addressing the traffic commission, which didn't go anywhere.
It was before Linda Lane was opened up to River Mesa.
Can you come show me where you want it?
Sir, would you mind stating your name and your street?
Jared Owens, nine six seven Dover Mansion. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And uh.
There's Linda Lane.
Down around, and it switches to River Mesa right here.
Right.
And then it comes down, and there used to be a barricade right here and nothing. These three streets were the first three, and that's when we started complaining about the speeders. Before it's ever even opened up the River Ma- or the Linda Lane, it puts curves around the the Ranchwood Boulevard.
So where do you want that closing?
Be nice right there where it used to be.
It used to be worn on both sides. There used to be closes on both sides. Before River Mesa was built, Smoky Oaks ended at Dover Mansion. Ranchwood South ended at Linda Lane. They were both dead ends. And when River Mesa came in, right, just a wheat field. River Mesa came in, and now it's about a one mile stretch to that neighborhood.
It's this right here. Is that the stretch?
Essentially, it would be right here.
Okay.
But this is the new stretch that does the new neighborhood to the old.
And where are we looking at, Teddy, though?
Here.
Where it's gonna be good. That'd be the same thing. We've already complained about three years ago.
So tell us what's your, what's your thoughts of.
Mister Short, could you please stand at the microphone so we can hear you?
Give us your thoughts on on what you think.
We feel like it needs to be blocked from River Mesa to Dover.
So River Mesa to Dover.
Uh, Oasis Court.
Oasis, yes.
So at Oasis.
Yes, because it, we're gonna be just right back here again. I mean, like I said, we started complaining of this when it had three streets and the River Mesa addition built.
So you're thinking block it where you couldn't go down Dover, and Dover would become a a dead end at Oasis Lane?
Yeah, or put speed humps up. Like, I don't know why they're fighting this so hard. There are three inch rides, and and they're very, it's gonna be cheaper to put those up than what you're blocking the street off for. Or, doesn't make any sense.
I'm not exactly sure why, why that came up on blocking the street anyway on on that side.
Yeah, this person.
That came from uh.
Well, I brought this idea up because it, that was the original, I I thought we were further down at Linda and River Mesa's is the, was the issue.
We've been the ones coming to the traffic committee meetings on Dover Mansion.
From the start, and we get some guy that, you know, hadn't even had a house, hadn't even been on a, the lot. Goes to the traffic commission to get stuff done, and we're like standing here with our hands in our pockets.
So the, the, is there a stop sign at?
There is now at Oasis Court.
Okay, so there's that one at Oasis Court.
We got that approved, what, about six months ago, maybe?
So Oasis, Oasis Court and Oasis Lane is the same?
Yes.
Is that the same street, Oasis Lane and Oasis Court?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you have a stop sign, just a few, literally just a few houses down from you, is that right?
Uh, I'm in the middle of the block.
Okay, so the speeders are getting up to speed from Oasis Lane down Dover before they turn on Smoky Oaks.
Yeah, and like I said before, it's uh almost two football fields long before they hit stop sign to stop sign.
Well, okay.
Seventeen hundred yards.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, it looks like ten houses from Oasis to Smoky Oaks.
Would it be cheaper, as he said, to do the the bumps in the road?
We can't even get anybody to address.
We have a dip in ours. I'm on uh.
Well.
Olympic, and it's like a mile long, and we have a dip, and they just bought them out and keep going.
We brought it up several times.
Yeah, so I mean.
We can't get any traction on it, so.
And I, I showed y'all literature of the speed tankers, and they're designed where fire trucks, bless their hearts, they can still go over them between them.
Yeah, we've, we've been told it's, it's a.
Sean?
Yeah.
Is it bad for fire trucks?
Gonna have a hard time going up, uh.
Yeah.
You won't stop?
If you block this, if you block the road off, it's gonna be hard to get you there too, so.
Yeah, how's that gonna affect by, if us, us closing off that road, how's that gonna affect the fire department?
Well, I mean, we have access to go through. It's always better. I mean, if we get emergencies calls, you know, because if we get the wrong address and it's right across, then if you look at that map, it's gonna be a long response to go plumb around. But if we know it's closed down, then we just, you know, when we try to respond, that's what we do. With it being open now, we like that, but.
Does the fire trucks have a problem with the speed bump?
Um, I, if we know that the speed bumps are there and they're properly marked, we just slow down and take our time going over them.
Well, these new ones are made out of recycled rubber and are wide enough for a fire truck to straddle. And they're designed where there's space in the road where they're, they have that ability, but a car can't. It's too wide for a car. So, you know, I don't know, we've uh.
Assistant Chief, can you come up and give us your, your nickel's worth? Inflation is no longer two cents.
Yes, sir. Deputy Chief John Brown, the Yukon Police Department. I think you have to take into consideration um any type of traffic control device, whether it's speed humps, speed bumps, uh, display, digital display signs, um, stop signs. Any of those would help reduce speeders. Uh, but you also have to have the reports because I can tell you there are probably numerous reports out there that say speed bumps are worse than speed humps. Both are gonna cause some type of wear and tear on vehicles. Uh, you're gonna, now you're gonna have noise considerations that are with vehicles revving up after they go over the hump. Um, slowing down, squealing, those vehicles that don't slow down are gonna probably get damaged. Uh, we have to look at on the maintenance part of the police department and I think the fire department as well, uh, wear and tear on on our vehicles uh as well. Uh, but at the end of the day, you have to look at what's best for that area. Uh, so we did con- conduct a traffic study over a five week period uh in March and April. And um we did go with some of the recommendations and spoke with Mister Short. Um, at the time, we we recommended a four way stop sign at Oasis Court and Dover Mansion. Um, and so just to try to reduce that footprint of vehicles just speeding through there.
Mister Short, has, has the stop sign helped?
No, and I might add that all their data is skewed because their radar doesn't shoot downhill.
Hold on, I, I don't care on that. I I just want to know on the, on the stop sign. I'm just asking you on the, did the stop sign help at all?
No, did it?
So.
He lives on a corner and and. This is like.
Okay.
I would, I would ask that some type of data be um taken um on, you know, what what their recommendations are. Um, there has to be some research done in some of the data. Um, I don't think that, you know, just recommending, because I, what I don't want to do is get this wrong. You put speed humps and it doesn't help.
When you run over my grandbaby, then there's gonna be some problems. So I don't know what you're gonna, you know.
I don't know if anybody mentioned anything about running over grandbabies yet. We're talking about speed bumps and a study.
No, they are. When one of my grandchildren are playing in the street, yeah, we are.
Sir, we're, we're talking about, we do the right type of traffic control.
So.
Whether that's stop signs, stop, speed humps, or or uh digital display signs.
Have you seen the speed humps I'm talking about?
Yes.
The three inch ride?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, Deputy Chief, could you? Could you, how much time would it take for you to get the data you need to present to us with a an answer that is the best for this situation? Could you have that by the next meeting?
I can pull some research. Um, yes, thirty days, uh sixty days at best, but thirty days. I could try to start.
We're gonna do this. We're gonna say, next meeting, I want some hard data on what's going on there, what, and what is the best thing to do for that, for that street? If that's an, if that's more stop signs, if that's a whatever.
Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
They don't even stop their stop signs, so we'll go with that. They float their stop signs all day long. I sit there and I watch them.
Talk about your neighbors?
Everybody goes up the street.
Okay, so I I hear from Councilman Wooton, so would you like to amend?
I'm gonna amend my motion to table this to the next meeting with.
Postpone until a definite time. Our, our city clerk would prefer postpone until a definite time, which is January the fourteenth, not table.
We can't table now?
You can, but, but it's gonna get, do a little two step next time.
Okay, I'll postpone it until then.
Postpone until a definite time.
Until a definite time.
We didn't have to do all that double stepping when we did the park thing.
To January fourteenth.
If you table something, you have to remove the.
To January fourteenth, yes.
Okay, the motion.
We're just asking for help. I mean, we've exhausted.
Just one, one second, Mister Short. There'll be a time of discussion in just a second. Uh, Vice Mayor Wooton has amended his motion to postpone this item until a definite time, January the fourteenth. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Mister Short, would you like to, we have time of discussion now.
You know, uh, we've all have been, you know, if I'd have known we were wasting our time by getting signatures, taking it to the traffic commission for the last three years. If we'd just came here, I think we'd have probably had something done by now. But nobody's listening to us. The traffic commission's a joke. I mean, we started this like three years ago, and they have no documentation we were even there, which is, I don't know. What you call it, stupid?
Mister Short, I would, I would say that I am listening. I believe my fellow council members here are listening to you.
You are listening, but it's just like, w- when we heard they were gonna close the street, it's like, it's like, cut off your nose and spot your face.
And that's why we want to table this, or postpone it, because I I don't want to close a street. Because I don't want it to ever hinder the fire department or the police.
Well, again, like when I addressed the police department.
Right.
About all the issues, it's like they get their feelings hurt and they just like yank the trailer the next day. I say, well, your radar's not shooting downhill, and they won't.
Well, we're gonna look at this and get some answers for it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We all thank you.
So mo- motion to postpone until a definite time made by Vice Mayor Wooton, seconded by uh Councilman Zimmerman. Um, any other discussion on this item? And we've asked, and we've asked Deputy Chief Brown to ensure that we have some hard data to look at. We can ensure that the radar is shooting in the right direction, the radar trailer. Okay, seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Kilmore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a discussion, consideration, action, and or possible amendments to direct that notice of the proposed annexation pursuant to eleven O S. Section twenty-one dash zero three, one, twenty-one dash one zero three and public hearing be published in a legally qualified newspaper of general circulation in the territory. And to direct that a copy of said notice of proposed annexation be mailed to all pr- all owners of property to be annexed. The proposed annexation includes the following territory shall be referred to as phase one. The south half of section sixteen and the southeast quarter of section seventeen, both lying north of the right of way line of U S Highway sixty-six. The northwest quarter section twenty-one, the northeast quarter of section, of quarter of section twenty, both lying south of the south right of way line of U S Highway sixty-six and north of the north right of way line of interstate of Interstate Highway forty. The southwest quarter of section twenty-one and the southeast quarter of section twenty, both lying south of the south right of way line of Interstate Ford, Highway forty, all of section twenty-eight, and the east half of section twenty-nine, lying south of the south right of way line of Interstate forty, all in Township twelve North, Range zero six West of the Indian Meridian in the Canadian County, Oklahoma, containing ninety million five hundred seventy-three thousand three hundred sixty-five point two three square feet or two thousand seventy-nine point two eight acres more or less. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Shriver, seconded by Vice Mayor Wooton. Any discussion?
Could, could you read all that again for me?
No, my, my English teacher would wonder if I know how to say Meridian. Uh, thanks, Danny. Thank you.
It was tough to keep along.
Yeah.
This is something, annexed property, something I feel we should have been doing a long time ago in this town. We've pretty landlocked and it's. This is something, annexed property is something I feel we should've been doing a long time ago in this town. We've pretty landlocked and it's, we're having a hard time trying to find the right growth, so. Um, I'm all for annexing what we can.
Thank you.
Did, Denny, did you wanna speak?
Mr. Myers.
I'm Denny Myers, eleven forty-eight dawn in Yukon. I used to be in Mr. Wooten's chair over there. And, um, I have some concerns about being too quick on the trigger to annex property. I know right now the rush is on. It's like a big gold rush to annex property, and we're trying to beat El Reno. They're trying to beat us. We're trying to beat Mustang, Oklahoma City's on the sideline, and it's getting kinda crazy. But I would say there's gotta be a point in the newly acquired property, and I, I think everybody would agree. Uh, to, it's gonna lead to some possible new tax dollars. Tax dollars initially expended. Now, you may get them back someday, but you're gonna have to initially expend those tax dollars, and they're gonna have to go for some new water lines. Not all, I get that part, but there's gonna be some new water lines. There's gonna be some new sewer lines that are gonna have to be installed. There's gonna have to obviously be stormwater maintenance. And, uh, the collection of any sort of tax money is gonna have to be shifted to the areas of the greatest population. Which means initially, the people within the greatest population of Yukon are gonna end up paying for anything having to be done to the annexed properties, if that makes any sense. So the burden would fall initially, in my opinion, on the majority population within our current borders. At a time when we have kind of declining sales taxes. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, we were down almost about two hundred thousand dollars last month. And about a hundred thousand dollars the month after, well, two months ago, and the month after that, about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it seems like we should be cutting spending rather than increasing spending. And I can only imagine what might happen to our water bills if suddenly we have to face some issues with regard to these annexed properties. Now, I spoke a little bit with, uh, Dr. Horton over here, and he explained to me that some of that is in a rural water district. But not all of it is gonna be covered by that. We know that. So with the new businesses, if there are any, would they have to pay for it? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe we would have a TIF. I don't know. I don't like TIFs. I can tell you a hundred reasons why not to do those. But, uh, the area will also have to need additional fire and police protection. Even if we're doing that right now, I guarantee you that those departments will ask for more money. Because they're gonna have more areas that they must cover. So I think there's, this needs a little bit of a look see. Uh, rather than being too quick on the trigger, if, if you know what I'm trying to say here. As, uh, I taught economics for forty years. And I kinda know about income versus outgo. I get that idea. And this is what we're faced with right now on the city. And I know you've done what you feel is in the best interest of the city to increase income. But even then, we're faced with a difficult situation. And I'm not sure that we're spending the money that we have on exactly what we need to be. And in particular, when you're dealing with, uh, annexation, that could lead to all kinds of unintended consequences. As, uh, City Manager Castro has pointed out. Now, I said when I came up here that, uh, I would not mention getting a rope or anything this time. That was. So Assistant Chief, I won't talk about a rope. And, uh, I got in trouble last time. So I won't talk, can I mention a rail?
No, no.
Can't say a rail either, okay. No, I think you guys are trying to do the right things, but I think you really sometimes need to just slow down a little bit, you know what I'm saying? It'll work out, but I don't wanna get in the race with these guys. It's not worth it. Sometimes when you win, you lose. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Myers.
I do know that we are already policing and fire, uh, protection in this area. I also know that El Reno is watching very closely to what we do tonight, as they sit here in our midst. I don't think they're here, uh, because they enjoy coming to city council meetings, uh, but we welcome y'all anytime you wanna come.
Yes, sir.
My name's Ron Bohannon. I live at thirty-nine hundred North Banner Road. And I'm in the middle of this deal. So the people that I live around, we, um, don't wanna be part of El Reno.
I under.
Sorry, but that's just the way it is.
We understand.
Um.
I'm sorry, Matt.
The, um, where I'm at, they're wanting to annex my, I'm, I live on section sixteen. I live at the corner of Banner Road and sixty-six highway. And so they've already started this. I got a deal in the mail today, yesterday, and had to go over there and pick it up, and it's a notice that they're gonna annex that area. Or try to. And I guarantee you that ninety percent of the people in there do not wanna be in El Reno. So with that said, if you're gonna do that, then if you're gonna annex that, then why not go all the way down to tw- tw- twenty-eighth street? And butt up to, uh, Union City and get that whole area.
I appreciate that thought, Mr. Bohannon, and that's why you'll see in this particular phrasing here, we have phase one.
Yeah.
So we have future phases planned, but the initial one that we needed to get outlined here is, is the one as described.
My property's right across from CPI Pike.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the people that on the, north of me, all the way up to, uh, Wilshire, uh, have stated, and we've already said this, that we've gone through this before. When we tried to make a town to keep everybody from them, that happening ten, fifteen years ago.
Yes, sir.
So it's inevitable that it's gonna happen. Because we're not gonna have enough people to stop it if you, you guys do this, but the thing of it is, Yukon, um, and El Reno are, you know, adversaries and that thing like that, although we get along, be, things like that, but the, I've talked to se- several people today. Because I just had to go get my, uh, letter from the post office that they, that they were gonna do this.
Yeah.
And then I get message that you guys are trying to come this way too.
Yes, sir.
So take a vote.
Yeah, I think, eh, you know, when I look at your property and your neighbors' properties, I know many of those folks that are out there. And I've, I see them as being our neighbors already, right? Fire, police, they're, they're people, like I, I drove today right, right by Banner Road and sixty-six, right by your property. And so I feel more often than not that those, those people that are coming to Yukon to shop, they're coming to Yukon to go to church, they're coming to Yukon to do business. And, um, I think it's a very natural fit, this described, this described area, I think is very natural to be annexed to Yukon.
Well, and next again, I don't wanna expound on the tail, but you can call the people down the road there. To where Union City comes up, and they're already a next, up to, I think it's twenty-eighth street.
Yeah.
They're up that way and they're all the way to that, so they want to be part two.
Yep.
And.
And we certainly get along really well with, with our friends in Union City and, uh, and have a lot of friends and neighbors coming.
The, the water deal, I'm on the, uh, water department, of the water board, Canadian County Water Board, and those boards are set. You're not gonna be able to get that water or have to provide that water because those are set by the government. Those are, those are districts that are set, and nobody can violate those districts. So you can't do that. And the water itself will come from the Canadian County Water Authority. It's, uh, all the long way through there. It's in that district. So that's not something that Yukon's gonna have to worry about.
Yes, sir.
We buy that water from Oklahoma City and we, we have pipe and we go all the way, we go all the way to Union City. With our water system, so. And part of El Reno, so that's not something that is gonna be put on the city of Yukon to have to, to force water, had to provide water for those areas out there. Just so you know.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or public comment? Seeing no additional discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, is there any new business?
There is no new business tonight, Mr. Myers.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the floor for each councilperson to say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognitions, et cetera. It is not intended for the conduct of city business by council mem- by members of the public body. Councilmember Selby?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Main Street for all they did for downtown Main Street for Christmas. Uh, it was a wonderful season. They, um, as we showed through Placer, had so many people in the thousands that came out to that event. I wish you all a very merry Christmas. Have a very safe New Year.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Been a long night. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Councilmember Shriver?
I just, uh, yearly inspection on your, on your, uh, batteries and your smoke detectors, guys. You guys don't understand what those can do if you guys are sleeping and you guys are harmed with fires away. It can be life-changing. It's the simplest check in your batteries. So go home, check the batteries in your smoke detectors, and y'all have a great Merry Christmas.
Vice Mayor Wooten?
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll make it short and sweet.
Thank you. I, I too am feeling a little bit tired, but nonetheless, we have some great upcoming events here in Yukon. Christmas in the Park continues through December thirty-first. Runs nightly from six P M. to eleven P M. held in City Park and Chisholm Trail Park. Cost, uh, free to all, for all to attend. There are some optional costs for train rides, five dollars, ice skating, ten dollars for children, five and under, and thirteen dollars for everyone else. Also, there's some great food trucks in the park. Uh, Sounds of the Season this Thursday, just a couple of days away, seven thirty P M. Please come, uh, it's a great show. Five dollar general admission tickets, ten dollar reserve tickets. Get your tickets on sale at all Y and B locations, park and rec facilities, as well as online, and the link is on our homepage, I believe. The Oklahoma Metropolitan Orchestra led by Dr. Zachary Daniels, who was a protege of Irv Wagner, will be performing in a family-friendly concert with sing-alongs and special guests. Hoops and Hustles Skills Competition will be held after Christmas, December twenty-seventh, four P M. Six to thirteen-year-old girls and boys with two-year age groups held in Jackie Cooper Gym. Free to all, free for all to attend. Test your skills in any of the three events, free throw contest, vertical jump contest, lane agility test. Uh, my comments, um, you know, I, I would like everyone to take a little bit of time and just remember, Christmas is where we celebrate Jesus's birth. I'd like to read a brief expert excerpt that I wrote a few years ago. Jesus came into the world in a time of great discord. The land that God had promised the Israelites was occupied by foreigners. The Israelites were divided within the land into various sects, and the family life of Jesus was fractured by an apparently scandalous conception and imminent birth. Yet, in the midst of this discord, God sends Jesus into the world just as he sent manna from heaven to serve as his provision for the Israelites in the desert. You see, the bread of life was sent into Bakeryville to be, be born. That is what the meaning of the name of the town is, Bethlehem, or the house or place of bread. While it wasn't his hometown, was the ancestral hometown of King David, from which it was promised the Messiah would come, and of course, it was the hometown of his earthly father, Joseph. So God in his providence sent Jesus, the bread of life, into Bakeryville. This bread was not just for the citizens of Bakeryville. He came to seek and save the lost. He came to testify to the truth. God sent his only son, not to condemn the world, but in order that the world might be saved through him. Have a Merry Christmas. This meeting is adjourned.